Good evening. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting tonight, please complete a request to speak form. It's available at the entrance and presented to the City Clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. At this time, if you would please silence your cellphones and be advised that our meetings are being recorded. Call to order the City Council meeting for the City of Grand Terrace. This is a regular meeting of June 12, 2018. Our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Stephen Brandt of the Church on the Hill. And immediately following that, we will have our Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by our finance management analyst, Todd Nakasaki. If you would please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening and let us pray. Heavenly Father, we look to you this evening and with humility ask for both your wisdom and your direction regarding the items of business that are before us tonight. Decisions that will be made that affect the lives of all who call Grand Terrace home. I pray also for those who have been placed in positions of leadership over us and our community. Guide them with your counsel and help them to serve with integrity. And also I ask that you would keep safe all those who serve to protect and keep us safe. May your peace and your goodwill be with the many families and the individuals of our community and keep us always in your watchful care. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please place your right hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Pastor Brandt. Thank you Mr. Nakasaki. Madam City Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Henderson.
Present.
Councilmember Hesse.
Present.
Mayor Protem Robles.
Present.
Mayor McNaboe.
Present.
Councilmember Doug Wilson is absent. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, do we have additions or deletions to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The City Attorney will brief us on the item.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The staff has requested that you consider adding an item to your agenda tonight. You're allowed to do that pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 54.2 with a two-thirds vote, which in this case would be unanimous vote tonight, and with two findings. First, that there's a need to take immediate action, and two, that the need for action came to the attention of the local agency subsequent to the posting of the agenda. The item to be added is as follow. Conference with real -- to your closed session agenda is conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 56.8. The property involved is 22400 Barton Road, number 200, City of Grand Terrace. The agency negotiator is G. Harold Duffy, your City Manager. Negotiating party is the 22400 Barton LLC-James D. Franklin, under negotiation price and terms of payment. This matter is a real estate transaction matter, which in time is the essence, and that's why it requires immediate action. And also that the offer that you would be discussing in closed session came yesterday, so it was after the posting of the agenda. My recommendation of the council wants to consider this, that you vote to place it on the agenda at this time, and then when you get to closed session, you can take it up.
What would you like to do?
I move that we place the item on the closed session agenda.
That's second.
All right. Motion by Mayor Protem Robles, second by Councilmember Hesse. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson and Hesse voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
Thank you. We had a longtime resident and very giving person to our community, Masako Gifford, who has passed, and I would like to close in her honor tonight. We don't have any special presentations, but we do have our consent calendar items that we'll move to. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal from -- of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests for removal of items?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to remove number five.
Okay. Check register. Any others?
Yes.
All right. I'll entertain a motion for the balance.
I move adoption of the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem Robles, second by Councilmember Hesse. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson and Hesse voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
All right. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Hesse, check register is yours.
All right. I had a question on one of the -- it's packet page 69. And it's for check number 75216. And the total amount's 174840. Can you explain to me why we are paying Mr. Hilkley 174840?
Councilmember Hesse sent the fortune. As part of Mr. Hilkley's separation and his tenure in City Council, he was allowed to actually get reimbursed up to $1,800 annually for insurance. This is an annual reimbursement for him.
All right. So that was part of their benefit when they voted on that? You know how long ago they voted on that?
That was passed, I would have to assume, after he left council. He is the only one that has that. They have since rescinded that to all succeeding council members.
So Mr. Hilkley gets that money every -- is it the same time every year, or is it just annual?
It's the same amount every year. When he submits it for reimbursement, it's not consistent, so. But it is up to $1,800 annually.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have now.
Did you want a motion for the check register?
I'd like to make a motion for number five. Number five?
I second it.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Hesse to approve the check register, second by Mayor Protem Robles. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson and Hesse voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
All right. Thank you. Move to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may not discuss or act on any items not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarification. Are there any requests to speak during this time? Thank you. All right. Our first speaker is Darlene Duron.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Darlene Duron. I am here with Paul Luna. And we are back again. We are with the Relay for Life. We had our event this past April. It was a success here in the City of Grand Terrace. We did raise $78,000, and that's all fighting cancer. Also, you guys provided us with a grant for our survivors area. We did have 160 cancer survivors at our event, and with the grants, we were able to do some gifts for them. We were able to get their shirts, supplies, medals. I just -- it was amazing. We just wanted to come here and thank you for allowing us to be here in the city. We have a thank you plaque, and also with the 2,000, that made your City of Grand Terrace a bronze sponsor.
How wonderful. Thank you. Let's get a picture of you and the council. Thank you so much for coming back and telling us how your event went, and the plaques are lovely. Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Johan Gallo.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Johan Gallo, 22808 De Soto Street, Grand Terrace. First, I want to thank the staff and the mayor for having the three budget meetings throughout the city. I know it takes a lot of time and effort to do that, but I think it's important for people to understand where the money's being spent and what we're spending it on. Some things were said during those meetings that I think is important, especially when it comes to grants for safe cities, that include lighting, signs, speed controls, and other things that can be obtained through grants. What can't be obtained through grants is the money that we need for additional sheriff coverage. And while I appreciate all the time and effort that was spent on talking about these things, there is very little to address the issue of how we're going to come up with the additional funding for the sheriff. I do appreciate that we did have a windfall to cover the overtime for the year and the time that was spent to do that, to help the city, but now that that has passed, we have seen nothing that's going to address the shortfall that we have for coverage for the city. And that's a concern that me, many business owners, and residents have on what we're going to do in Grand Terrace. I realize there's a lot of budget issues that we need to address, and there's always a balance between where the money gets spent and what it gets spent on. November, we're going to go out to the residents, and we're going to ask them to increase the taxes that they're going to pay. But I think it's upon us and the city to look at where they can generate revenue, whether it's selling real estate holdings or anything else that they may have, to come up with the additional funding to ease the burden of the increase of property taxes. We all know that everybody hates taxes. We're tired of it, because we always see the money gets allocated, and then at the stroke of the governor's pen, it goes somewhere else. Talk about a bullet train. There is an example. But I think the key issue for us is it's about the safety of our citizens and our residents and the sheriffs who protect us. And I think it's upon us to do the best we can to balance that and look for the funds to do what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Our next speaker is Mr. Jeff Allen.
Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you for this opportunity. I have a question or two going on that's been going on ever since this whole discussion. Oh, 22549 Branwood Street in the Blue Mountain City. So I went and spoke with the City Clerk because I had some questions about the parcel tax and it going on the ballot and all the procedures and things. And what I found out was that there's no rebuttal argument, and I have some concerns with that. No, there's no opportunity -- there's no rebuttal argument going to be printed, as far as I understand it now. Again, this is -- I'm going to claim ignorance on all this, and I'm actually asking to be educated from the attorney or -- because the City Clerk did a wonderful job in trying to -- and sent me a nice email, and one of these emails says, you know, the author of the argument has to write the rebuttal or authorize somebody to write the rebuttal. And since there was no author of an argument, then there's no rebuttal. But there'll be a proposition printed for the citizens to vote on, but there's not going to be a rebuttal argument for them to be educated on the opposing viewpoint, because nobody's had -- and the reason is because nobody thought to write the argument or the rebuttal because the -- they didn't get enough signatures. So nobody thought, oh, well, it's not going to be necessary, because it didn't make it. And then all of a sudden, bam, all in one night, we get it put on the ballot or authorized by the council, put on the ballot, and nobody's told, oh, by the way, you've only got X number of hours to write a rebuttal. So, you know, that's a concern I got with this going on the ballot. And I did some simple math also, and I've mentioned this to a couple of you also. Nobody's been able to counter this to me, but you know, we -- I know we pay one percent -- we get 1% of the sales tax already. An extra half a percent, I would have to spend in the City of Grand Terrace businesses $16,000 annually to pay that $86 in parcel tax, the equivalent of it. Where's the sense in that? I don't spend that much money in Grand Terrace in a year. I don't spend that much money in Grand Terrace in probably five years, you know, or more. That's a lot of money annually to try to match what I would pay in that parcel tax. Now, if this math, it may not be quite accurate, but I think it's pretty close. Last thing I got to say, parcel tax and my water bill's probably going to go up? I think that I'd be happy to have my water bill go up if that money went to pay for that cop.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Mr. City Attorney, did you want to address the concern with respect to rebuttal?
Yes, Madam Mayor. What Mr. Allen said is correct. The code says that in order to be qualified to write a rebuttal, you have had to have written an argument. So if someone had written an argument in opposition, then they would be qualified to write a rebuttal to the argument in favor. That is set out in the Elections Code quite clearly.
And the window for that argument against has passed?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any more requests to speak? Thank you.
Bobby Forbes, 11850 Burns Avenue. Okay. I'd like to follow up a little bit of what Johan says. I think that besides the city residents paying a supplemental tax, that there should be something looked at with the budget to supplement where it's needed, if there's any way to do that. But most importantly, my friends at the Emergency Animal Hospital had an upset client the other night. They had to call 911. It took 13 minutes for the sheriff to get there. I'm not complaining about that, but I'd like you to check into something. Apparently, when the deputy went to go there, he didn't know where it was, because it's a new building. It didn't show up. It was an address with their phone number. That's scary. So what about all these new homes being built on Mount Vernon or on Pico? I never even thought about something like that, but they had an issue there, and those girls are scared. So I'd like somebody to figure out how that could be fixed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. All right. We'll close public comment at this time, and we'll come back to council for their communications. We'll begin with Councilmember Ken Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My comments will be brief. I want to thank the mayor, council, city staff, Mr. Don Larkin, Mr. Jim McNaboe. Regarding the outpouring of support for the recent passing of my sister, I had asked if prayers could be offered for her at the Veterans Day Ceremony, and the people I called out were only too gracious in helping make that happen, along with Mr. Duffy. So I've received a number of emails and texts and other contacts, and I want to thank those individuals for doing that. I will likely have to take my leave at early tonight's meeting to travel up north for grave site ceremony. But I did want to thank all of those present and those not present for their support and for their prayers. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Councilmember Bill Hesse.
Thank you, Mayor. Ken, you and your family are still in our family's prayers, and if you need anything, just give us a call. Quick, I want to thank the residents who came out for the three budget meetings. It was a couple of good turnouts, and you guys using your own personal time to ask questions and to kind of get what's going on in the budget. And also, I want to thank some residents in Grand Terrace who helped with the Vietnam Moving Wall. It was over there in Bloomington, and it's a miniature wall, the Vietnam Memorial Wall, and where Vietnam veterans were killed in action in Vietnam. And we had a lot of residents go over there and help with that. And I went by there a couple times, and there was requests from one resident who's out of state, if I could make shaded copies of the names, and of course, I did, and I mailed it to him. But, you know, you reflect on, I think it was 58,000 Americans that lost their life in Vietnam, and you look at the wall and you put all the names on there, and you think, wow, that's like, you know, it's almost three times Grand Terrace size, you know, the residents or the amount of bodies or people that lost their lives. And a lot of those young men and women lost their lives at a young age, so it's a nice day to reflection and people just going out and volunteering. And I guess the wall's going to be in California one more time, and then it moves out through the country. So I think it's a pretty nice way they had that monument moving out so Vietnam veterans can see that and honor their buddies. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hesse. Council -- excuse me, Mayor Protem, Sylvia Robles.
Yes. I wonder if we can't honor the request of Mr. Henderson to change the agenda out a little bit? Perhaps go to closed session, come back and deal with the proposed budget?
So you're making that motion?
Yeah.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Mayor Protem Robles to change the agenda and to bring forward closed session item prior to our new business, second by Councilmember Hesse. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson and Hesse voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
All right. Mayor Protem, did you have report?
I'm going to suspend my report until the next meeting.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and give my report. On June 4th, we had a follow-up meeting with National Orange Show hosted by the City of San Bernardino. The mayor and the city manager there have been working with the board members and the management of National Orange Show to come to an agreement to have them operate in such a manner that they don't disturb their surrounding communities, as well as work with San Bernardino on some of the issues that they are seeing as residual from the entertainment that they seem to attract at that particular venue. They have a draft memorandum of understanding, and that will actually address the issues that the surrounding communities are having. We had representatives from Loma Linda, Colton, San Manuel. We had county fire there. We had county sheriff. Thank you Lieutenant Wolfe for being there. We had Colton PD. And so this is the first step of coming up with something solid that will show repercussions to National Orange Show as they continue to operate. We all want them to operate in a manner that is successful for them. We want them to grow and be a very nice event center for the region, but we also want them to be good neighbors. And the mayor of San Bernardino believes that by having a number of the cities come in and sit down with them, that this stops them from pushing back too much, and they realize that there is an issue they need to deal with. So there will be more follow-up on that. On June 6th, the San Bernardino County Board Meeting, I will address items not on Metro Valley Study and General Policy Committee meetings. We did have conference with legal counsel on existing and anticipated litigation. We also had a public employee performance evaluation for the executive director and legal counsel. We appointed Mayor Kerry Davis of the City of San Bernardino to the Southern California Regional Rail Authority Board of Directors during our regular meeting. We also approved an addendum to the Redlands Passenger Rail Project. We approved an increase in contingency for the Stadler U.S. for procurement of diesel multiple unit vehicles for the Redlands Rail. We did a receive and file on analysis of operations and maintenance costs for various transit modes, an update of the right-of-way acquisitions associated with Redlands Passenger Rail. We had a presentation and status update at San Bernardino on the San Bernardino Line Hybrid Rail Study. We had a report on the procurement procedures for San Bernardino Santa Fe Depot Station lighting repair work. We approved the Southern California Regional Rail Authority preliminary budget. We reviewed testimony from the September 2017 Unmet Needs Transit Public Hearings. We allocated major local highway program funds to the City of 29 Palms. We approved a loan agreement with the City of Hisparia for the I-15 Ranchera Road Interchange. We conducted public hearing for the adopted and proposed fiscal 2018-19 SBCTA budget. And on the toll lanes issue, that's the express lanes they will be adding to I-10, we authorized the executive director to award and execute contract for the Corridor Contract One Toll System to TransCor LP, and to execute an I-10 corridor contract, design-build contract to Lane Security Paving Joint Venture. We also had an election of officers for fiscal year 2018-19. We elected James Ramos, the board president, and I was elected board vice president. And that concludes my report. We have no public hearings, and we have no unfinished business, so at this time, we will recess to closed session, and I'd like us to take both of the closed session items while we're recessing. So we'll be in closed session for conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to paragraph one of subdivision D of Government Code Section 549, 56.9, City of Grand Terrace versus Riverside Highland Water Company. I will be recusing myself from this item, since my husband is a member on the Board of Directors for the water company. Following that, though, if you'll come get me, we will have the conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 56.8. We are in recess at this time. We'll reconvene to open session. Mr. City Attorney, would you like to report out, please?
Madam Mayor, members of the council and the audience, the City Council recessed in a closed session to discuss two items. The first item is conference with legal counsel concerning existing litigation, which is City of Grand Terrace versus Riverside Highland Water Company. The City Council received a report in closed session and provided direction and took no final action, and there's nothing further report on that item. The City Council considered next the item that was added on tonight, which is conference with real property negotiators, and that concerns a property at 22400 Barton Road, 200, City of Grand Terrace. The agency negotiator provided the City Council with a report on an offer that was made. The City Council provided direction, and no final action was taken on that matter either. There's nothing further to report out. It's closed session.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. We will move to new business. Item number nine, introduction of proposed budget for fiscal year 2017-18, maybe 18-19?
Thank you, Mayor, for the record. G. Harold Duffy, City Manager. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, there was one more thing I'd like to put on the record, and that is that the mayor was not present during the first item on the closed session, but was -- all four members that are here tonight were present for the real property negotiations.
Thank you for the Thank you for the clarification, Mr. City Attorney. All right. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. For the record again, G. Harold Duffy, the City Manager. I will be presenting the 2018-19 and 2019-20 budget for the city council along with Assistant City Manager Cynthia Fortune. So this is our first year submitting a two-year budget, and the budget will include the various components. This budget really is based upon the 2030 vision and its goals, and as submitted in the budget transmittal letter and also statements from last year, this really is the time where the city council has gone from a planning phase to an implementation and delivery of projects. So within this third, fourth, and fifth year of our 2030 vision, now is the time where we talked about planning the work, and this is the result of working the plan. And so a part of our core components of the 2030 vision are to ensure our fiscal solvency, maintain public safety, promote economic development, develop and implement successful partnership, and engage in proactive communications. So as I said before, this is a multi-year budget. We want to improve the financial management, emphasis on service delivery, program evaluations, and monitoring. As the council and the public should note, that the second meeting of every month, we provide department monthly reports, and that's when we quantify the activities that we're engaged in by department to department. Those aren't just reports that are just developed accidentally, but it's actually trying to show the council and the citizens that this is what we're doing with the resources that you provided us. We're also trying to improve long-range strategic planning, and we try to reallocation and redeployment of resources when they are necessary. So this is a familiar chart that we often use for every budget cycle and also for our first, second quarter and the development of the budget. So this is a chart that we use that basically kind of identifies the health and the condition of the budget in terms of how are we in terms of revenues versus expenditures on an annual basis? So when your expenditures exceed your revenues, you have an unsustainable insolvent budget. That means that there's no way you can sustain that. You'll have to either, if you have a healthy fund balance, you can borrow from the fund balance to try to make things balance out for the year, but it's a cycle that you cannot continue. But if you have a vulnerable budget, which means that the revenues exceed the expenditures, but you have less than the government accounting standards board's two-month rainy day fund, that basically saying, look, if you have a significant issue, you have this two months' worth of revenue that will allow you to sustain yourself over time. What's also important, too, is that because our revenues don't come in every month on a regular basis, but we get big chunks of revenue in terms of our property tax and our sales tax through certain times of the year. So if you don't have at least two months' worth of a fund balance to help tide you over during that timeframe, you could have some significant issues in terms of being slow in paying your bills or having to incur late charges. So the next thing that you, the next step on the level is a sustainable budget. That means the revenues exceed the expenditures, and you have that two months' worth of reserve. And that's really a good position to be in. And then you have the healthy budget. That means that the revenues exceed your expenditures, and you continue to show growth year over year, and you start to increase that, that you have revenue way above the two-month reserve, and you're seeing a healthy increase on an annual basis. So this chart, we actually have two components of the chart, and what we've done in the past, we've shown how, where we've come from and where we are today. But now the next chart kind of takes us to a different level. It's basically starting on 2013, but this kind of shows us that we're sort of stuck in this area here in terms of sustainability. Now, it's sustainable, and we have the two months' worth of reserve, but if anything happens to us, significant downturn in the economy, significant increases somewhere else, we run the risk of being dropping down to vulnerable. So this is why we talk about our future is in development and expansion, because we want to be able to get above this. We're going to see, based on this, we're going to see four, five years of, in this sustainable area. And if you note in the budget transmittal, we say in this coming year that we're projecting to have, to have X number of dollars in revenue and X number of expenditures and adding zero dollars to our fund balance. We get a little better to the next year, but, you know, that's really sort of tight. We're saying that we're going to be not adding anything to our fund balance. And so we'll get into that more discussion, but I wanted to, this is a very important slide to note, that we're sort of right here in this area where we need to, we'd like to grow, but we don't have anything in the short term that's going to get us there in the next two years. And the expansion of our economy through development and sale of property and increases are going to help us get to the next level of, up the ladder to a healthy economy, to a healthy budget. So let's talk about the general fund, and that's, the budget consists of quite a lot of different funds, but we always kind of focus in on the general fund. And Ms. Fortune is going to now walk us through our general fund budget.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council, Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager. As the city manager had mentioned, our concentration is normally at the general fund. So the table we presented are proposed revenues for 1819 and 1920. What we've done is also put in the 1718 projected year-end revenues to give all of you a comparison. Our biggest revenue generators are property tax and sales tax. The first two line items, properties tax and one that we refer to as residual receipts, are also that of property tax. So a couple of years ago, we actually, through the sale of several commercial properties, we got a big increase in property tax in 1718. That actually helped balance the budget as a result of reduction from our biggest sales tax generator. So in 1718, we actually projected, we are projecting revenues of 5.6 million. And if you see our 1819 and 1920, it is very close to that. Our other biggest reductions were in our miscellaneous, because that budget actually had the use of bond proceeds that we transferred from our successor agency to the general fund, and the use of money and property. At the beginning of the year, the original budget for the use of money and property should have been about $120,000 to receive from Family Services Association as they were leasing the childcare facility. Unfortunately, after three or four months in, they came back and asked to renegotiate, so we actually reduced that revenue to $47,000. And we have also received notice a month ago, and I believe council has been notified, Family Services Association will no longer be providing childcare services. So the program will terminate at the end of this year. Therefore, 1819 and 1920 will not have any more rent revenues. So what we provided, just the graphs showing, as I stated, our biggest, more than 50%, is all in property tax. So now to go to our general fund expenditure budget, again, we also projected a $5.6 million year-end in 1718, and this is what we used as a base for our 1819 and 1920. Pretty much keeping it is where we need to be. And we also provided the chart for the expenditures for 1819 and 1920, our biggest one being in professional and contractual services. Just to give the residents and council a preview, I've listed a few of what our personal service contracts are that encompass that 3.3 or 3.4 million. Again, the biggest being law enforcement services of 2 million. In addition to that, the city manager wanted to add what significant increases have transpired over the last several years. So we provided that in your packet, and now we have it up there. It will give the council like a history of all the increases, and these are all council, city council-approved increases over the last several years.
And although we talk about that being a significant increases, we also identify those as enhancements to services which the council requested.
Yes, so this would have included weekend code enforcement, additional senior programs, addition of the senior bus so that we could transport seniors to and fro. We increased maintenance services by the addition of an additional maintenance worker, increased administrative support. City council approved the end of furloughs, and we opened city hall back five days a week. We gave a one-time 5% merit increase. We also created the community benefits fund that have had all nonprofits in the City of Grand Terrace benefit from this. We went into an agreement with Colton Joint Unified School District for crossing guards. Now, the last three items, and I missed, yeah, the 12th was not on the staff report, but it is in your PowerPoint presentation, these are the last three of the big significant increases that city would have had to deal with in 1819 and 1920. As everybody knows, our unfunded accrued liability is increasing by 100,000. Our public safety contract is increasing by 121, and we are losing 237,000 of admin allowance from the successor agency. The admin allowance, whether we submit our last and final ROPS or we continue with our annual ROPS, the loss is still going to be there. It doesn't change.
Yeah. And to Mayor and Council, just very briefly, and it's primarily for the public's knowledge also. So the CalPERS unfunded accrued liability, what that really consists of is, so we provide money to CalPERS, and CalPERS invests that for our employees' retirement. But the way the system works is, CalPERS estimates through their actuarial that they will get a certain percentage in return. And so when they don't get that percentage in return, they come back to the city and say, well, we missed our goal by X number of dollars. You need to give us that extra money in order to fully fund your account. So that number represents what they've fallen short, or a percentage of what they've fallen short, that we need to pay. It's a larger number, but they're saying that that's what we need to pay now in order to get to a certain level. So that's what that really is. So CalPERS, we have an agreement with them to invest, and they have a guaranteed return to the employee. And the city makes up the difference when the CalPERS investments don't reach the goal which CalPERS had anticipated. And then along with the sheriff's contract increase, well, that increase is not an increase in services, it is just an annual increase. And then the other component there for the loss of successor agency is, the city used to receive about $237,000 for the administrative overhead to wind down the redevelopment agency called the successor agency. So as we sold off properties and moved things forward, the Department of Finance said to the city, we can't justify giving you $237,000 when there's not much left for you to do in terms of the redevelopment agency. And so that's how in the new, the last and final ROPS, they said, we're cutting out that $237,000. What we used to do is take that $237,000 and transfer it into the general fund to pay for predominantly management to administer the successor agency and wind down the agency. And so with that being wiped away, now the general fund has to support that $237,000.
So to give city council an idea of what we've had to do to actually balance, submit a proposed balanced budget, some of the significant adjustments that we've done, we are requesting, and it will be in the next slide, to unfund two positions in the finance department. Certain projects that were previously approved by city council, we would have to delay. That is the upgrade of the agenda processing system. Personal computers and some server peripherals are going to have to be delayed. We also looked hard, department heads looked very hard at our special revenue funds to see where salaries and benefits can be charged as a result of managing a capital project or a grant. And all department heads also looked and see where they could cut, whether it be materials, supplies, or any contractual services that they had. So the personnel requests or adjustments for city council consideration are the following, and these are already included in the budget that has been presented to city council. As I mentioned earlier, we are requesting to unfund two positions, one management analyst and a part-time principal accountant in the finance department. That's going to total about $120,000. We are requesting the addition of an animal control code enforcement officer of roughly about $35,000, and this person will be the on-call animal control code enforcement person. And the last one is Mr. Duffy's recommendation.
Yes, Mayor and Council, what we have unfortunately is a compaction issue with the public works director salary and the assistant city manager salary. Personnel best practices are that you want to maintain at least a 10% differential for those employees that potentially supervise other employees. The current salary of the ACM and the public, and the public works director is about 3%. And this will take it to the recommended 10% level that's needed for the compaction ratio. And so that's the recommendation of adjusting the city ACM salary to, by $11,500. I also want to add, though, in the additional position for animal control, under that position, that's not an additional cost associated with increasing that overall budget. What we're looking at is moving from the animal control contract that we have with San Bernardino County at $154,000 to moving to this hybrid system where included in our new program is the full-time court enforcement officer, the part-time court enforcement animal officer, both of them, and then the on-call animal control officer. And all of those positions will still allow us to have a $50,000 savings versus the contract that we had with San Bernardino, the City of San Bernardino for animal control services. So just wanted to be as clear as mud when I said that. I'm sorry about that. But it doesn't represent an increase above our existing services compared to 2017-18. It actually, adding that position still allows us to save the $50,000 from the city of San Bernardino animal control contract.
So as part of requirement, we have to report projected fund balance to city council. So fund balance as of June 30th, 2017, audited fund balance, if we would just look at the bottom part, $917,000. Given our projected year-end for 1718, we're ending at $880,000. The difference was the approval of $30,000 by city council to partly fund the new animal code enforcement code enforcement vehicle and about $8,500 to support the senior center program coordinator. The one-time fee for the vehicle is no longer in the budget, however, the ongoing amount to support the senior program coordinator at the senior center is included in the budget. And so for both fiscal years that we're presenting, we're showing that we will not be using any more fund balance, so the fund balance will stay at $880,000. All the way to June 30, 2020.
Okay, council, and so now I'm going to talk about our long-term liabilities. And as I indicated in the, what's the transmittal letter, and let me just grab that so I can read verbatim from that, so it's a very clear understanding, because I don't want there to be any issues associated with, that I'm not saying that there's a panic. While the city has maintained a healthy annual general fund and it's not deficit spending, the city does have some long-term liability. The liability is not due and payable now and is not anticipated that the debt will be called in the near future and create a significant financial crisis for the city. However, the debt still represents a liability that the city must plan to address in the near future. It's estimated that the general fund liability is $6.5 million and can be categorized as follows. And actually, that 6.5 number should be changed to...
Seven point six.
Seven point six. And so we have the OPED liability, which is the other post-employment benefits and the long-term liability the city has for payments of retiree medical. That means that the city will be contributing to current employees that are retired and future employees that are retired, a medical contribution for medical benefits. And then we have the unfunded accrued liability. The city must pay CalPERS $4.8 million to fully fund its employee pension for classic employee pensions accounts that underperform in the investment market. Now, this does not include when we have new employees that are hired under the PEPRA law. And our long-term liability for them, I believe, at this standpoint, which we pay on the annual basis, roughly was about $5,000 this past...
The total liability for PEPRA is $22,000.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to try to pay $5,000.
Yeah. So the number of employees that are hired under the new California PEPRA law, the liability is far less because the benefits are not as rich as the classic employees. Then we also have the JPIA retrospective liabilities, our cost allocation adjustments that cover prior period claims. That amount is $127,000. Then we have a loan from the RDA. The city's general fund from 1992, '93 until 2000, 2001, borrowed money from the former RDA totaling of $4.6 million. Since his dissolution, the general fund paid approximately $3.5 million to the successor agency. The current loan balance owed to the successor agency is $1.1 million, so the city sort of paid in advance, of which $150,000 is owed to the housing successor agency. The next payment of $200,000 is due and payable in 2028, '29. A long-term financial strategy will need to be developed to factor in the liability, its long-term impacts on the city's long-term financial strategy. So although we have this total of $8.5 million, which the number, you see the number continues to climb, but we have one point here, we have the general fund loan to purchase the Springfield property. Unlike the rest of these liabilities, there is an asset tied to this which we're trying to move, and we anticipate that property should be selling this year at the latest. And that is a slide that basically says, this liability is a little bit different than the other items. And then we'll talk about the other funds.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, as everyone is aware, the general fund is not the only city's fund, so included in your packet are all the other fund categories. We have development impact fees, special revenue funds, our enterprise fund, our wastewater fund, and grant funds. If you see a negative at the bottom, that means that they are going to be using fund balance, which was also part of the staff report. So we do have it for 1819 and for 1920. So for the use of fund balance, we also indicated on packet in your staff report, what I've done is combine, combine all the uses. So the street fund is requesting, in your packet it said $1,008,000, we actually need $1,033,000. I did a number wrong. To continue with the city's capital improvement program for the next two years. For the storm drain fund for the next two years, a little over $112,000 to augment storm drain improvements in conjunction with Commerce Way. For the park fund, for improvements to the veteran freedom park, veteran freedom park improvements, and I believe city council has been notified that we just recently got approved the Blue Mountain Trailhead grant, so we will be incorporating that into our system within the next two years. We're also looking to use our facilities fund to make some improvements to the maintenance yard. And for the air quality improvement fund, it's a one-time use of $57,000 for the purchase of a hybrid diesel truck for the public works maintenance division. Now, our last use of fund balance is just wanting to close out that capital project, I believe that's an old one, and there seems to be this balance of $2,300 sitting there. We're going to close the fund and return that money to the general fund. So at this time, we are proposing this budget schedule. We'd like to come back where each department can actually explain to department, explain their current activities, where they see themselves in two years, what their goals and projects are going to be. And so we're proposing two sessions of budget deliberations if council feels that is needed, and we will come back with budget adoption on the 26th. That concludes our report, and the city manager and I will be very happy to answer any questions city council may have.
All right. Thank you, Assistant City Manager. Thank you, City Manager. What questions at this time do council have of staff? Councilmember Hussey?
A couple of questions. I don't know if you could go back to the slide that says personnel requests and adjustments?
Sorry, you passed it.
Just allow it to...
I passed it.
Animal control. You passed it.
One more. There you go.
Yeah, right there. All right. The positions for one and two, for the unfunded two positions. We voted on for the personnel for that earlier, or is this something that you're requesting?
No, we actually, those positions are actually in this year's budget, and they were funded, but we didn't fill those positions. And so we're just removing those positions as a way to balance the budget for next year.
So those are removed for to cover the cost?
Yeah, I'm sorry, they're not, they're just unfunded, yes.
So you're not requesting so we can...
No. Not requesting the fund.
And then the animal control officer, the part-time, that's on-call for weekend only, or is it on-call seven days a week?
It's on-call seven days a week.
So it's $35,000 to be on-call? Is he actually going to come here and work, or does he sit by his phone and get paid?
Well, no, it's actually, it's budgeted at four hours per day.
Okay. And I didn't see in the package page, I don't know if you put this in here or I missed it, the increase in salaries, was that additional to this? I didn't see that in...
That was a mistake that we, that was not placed in the budget, and so we added it here.
It is already included in the proposed budget. I neglected to write it in the staff report. So the numbers will not change as a result of that.
So we're not going to be funding $120,000, correct, for the first unfunded ones?
Correct.
That's not in the budget for this year?
Yes, that's correct.
The $35,000 is for the animal control.
That's correct.
And you're requesting, Miss Fortune, to get a solid correction of $11,500?
I'm requesting the assistant city manager, yes, that adjustment.
And, you know, me personally, I mean, Miss Fortune, you do a good job and everything, but I don't, personally, I don't see, I mean, we're asking the voters to vote on something, and I don't see any salary increases coming out to this year if we're trying to make cuts. That's my opinion. Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Harret Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to take the temperature of the council, if I can, to determine whether or not the council is supportive of the two additional sessions on the budget, and if so, I'm prepared to take my leave. But if the council is going to get into the gory details tonight, which I didn't anticipate with the introduction, but I can understand that some members might want to do that, I'll still have to take my leave, but I just wanted to hear from my colleagues on that issue.
Well, I thought we could at least get, have continued deliberations, but I don't think we need two meetings.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yeah, I thought we're just in the beginning of this phase of the budget, because we're listening to department heads and the residents, but, you know, like I said on this question I had about the 11:05, I didn't see it in the packet, so I don't want to approve anything that's not in this packet that's being requested right here. So I thought we're just starting to begin deliberations on this, that we're not set in stone, we're cutting through all this?
Yes, so, mayor and council, as was customary, this is the city manager's proposed budget, and now I turn it over to you guys, and we'll go through department by department, and you guys can actually make the policy decision on how you want, on what you want to fund.
All right. Is everyone available for June 19?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Shall we schedule June 19 and then work to then have the budget adoption on the 26th?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
That works.
Okay.
Excuse me, mayor, just to be clear, is, you will determine whether you want to do the Thursday, or that's just off the table altogether?
Yeah, we don't need it.
Okay.
I don't think we need it.
I mean, you've had public, you've had outreach meetings, so it's not like, so this is more in our...
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. So do you want a formal vote on that, or is direction going?
I have direction.
Okay. Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to compliment staff, Miss Fortune, Mr. Duffy in particular, and the department heads putting together the two-year budget. I have some comments to make, not tonight, but later on, but I think what's been presented to the council and to the citizens has been, significant effort has been put forth, and I just wanted to make that statement as a part of this process. I'm sure we're going to get into detailed discussions down the road, but the document that's been presented to the council for consideration is, I think, a very, very good document under the economic and financial circumstances in which the city finds itself. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment at this time. Is there any request to speak on this item? All right. We'll bring it back to council for any further discussion or deliberation for tonight. Anything else? Okay, so we will move on to item number 10. That is the fabulous 40th anniversary events and updates. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, mayor. Once again, Gerald Duffy, City Manager. It was requested that I bring this item back to kind of give the council an update and sort of assess where we are. So we started this process in January, and one of the first things that we did was we had the pole banners that were sold to each, to various clubs and organizations throughout the city. We sold 30 of these banners to various organizations. There seemed to be, once we pulled the banners down, there seemed to be a lot of concern about where's my banner? And so one of the things we're, we'll reach back out to the various organizations and let them know what the schedule's going to be. Because part of the process was that they purchased the banner, and they purchased it for a price that allowed us to have additional banners to replace for activities and events throughout the year. And so I was surprised at the number of people who said, where's my banner and when's it going back up? And so we're reaching out to them, letting them know, one, where their banner is located, and, two, what the schedule's going to be. So they're back up now, and they'll be taken down again in October to promote some additional events, but I think it's just nice to be able to have that conversation with them so they have a clear understanding on that.
I was at the finance council meeting at Christ Redeemer, and they are happy that they are getting a new place for their banner.
Yes.
They do want to know where it is.
And we did get some feedback, and we moved some things around, some premium spots for that. So also, the completed events would include the 11th Annual Walk on the Blue Mountain, and we incorporated some changes to that event. We had tuition bites, they were selling food there, and that money was going to scholarships for high school students. We also had the 34th Annual Grand Terrace Art Show, and we also had the 2018 Grand Terrace Community Days. Future events would be music in the, movies in the park, international food sampling, Veterans Day celebration, 37th Annual County Country Fair, and the Fourth Annual Light Up Grand Terrace Event, and the city anniversary party, and Tour Day Terrace. So we'll, let's come back and give you more detail on that, I'll do that right now. So as I said before, we added some activities to the 11th Annual Blue Mountain Walk. We added Pokemon, which is a big hit. We had about 300 people that attended that event that day. There was some concern about the weather, but, you know, once we got up there, it was actually pretty good. We had a nice reprieve from the rain. In all, it was a good event, and we had lots of activity. We partnered with Friends of the Blue Mountain and Augmented Reality, Niantic's, a gaming company, and we had about 300 hikers, and we had food vendors, tuition bites, and Kona Ice. Can I forget Kona Ice? They're always a great addition. And if you haven't had the Big Stick Kona Ice, you gotta have that one. That's my favorite. The next item was the art show, the 34th Annual Grand Terrace Art Show. We completed banners and put those throughout town. We also added a few components. We had music added to the program. We were told that the attendance was about 150 people, so we had quite a bit of increase in that, and I think the event turned out very well. I think most people liked that. This was a partnership with the Historical and Cultural Committee, and one of the things that's very important in this process is that our goal is to try, staff's goal is to try to enhance existing activities. We are not taking the lead at this time, and to the credit of the Historical and Cultural Committee, they've put on this show for a number of years. All we wanted to do was support them by providing additional advertising and enhancing the ambiance with the musical group. Then we also completed the 2018 Grand Terrace Community Day. Part of this was we put pole banners up as a part of our pole banner program promoting the event. In addition to that, there were lots of fun activities that occurred on-site for that day, activities, competitions, and dance groups, and it seemed to be a good time by all. One of the things... One of the things that we incorporated into this Grand Terrace Community Day was that we created now a special events committee. And that special events committee meets with any event that's going to occur in our parks or require the city to provide some sort of additional services. The goal is, is to sit down with the organization and find out what resources they need and lay it out to them so there's not any surprises or frustration before the event. And so we did meet with, we met with the group, the foundation at the time, to kind of go over these events. We had some little hiccups, but we cleared them out in the, in the end. And, but it's apparent that we will need to start earlier because there were some things that wanted to be done and we will engage in a much more detailed activity in the future. The future events, these are going to what's coming forward in the future. Music and movies in the park. So if you guys have seen on our Facebook page, we have gone out and we've done a survey to try and figure out what's the best movies that we're going to have in the park. We've done the survey and so far, the community wants to see The Sandlot, Mrs. Doubtfire, Big, The Sound of Music, and Les Misérables. So those are items that are leading, so now we're going to pair those with the, with the particular park and we'll come up with a, in August, late July, early August, the series of events where we'll have, we'll use the multiple parks that we have throughout the city. And once again, we'll be working very closely with our Parks Committee to help us with defining and judging in terms of which movie which park should play in particular locations. Also, we have a future event, the Veterans Day Picnic and Fireworks Show. I met recently with the Veterans Wall of Freedom Committee and had a really good meeting with them. And once again, our goal, staff, is to enhance the activity. They do a really good job in terms of doing the ceremonial aspect. Our goal is to provide the additional support in terms of, we want to do some things for the, to enhance the park to begin with. I'm working with the Parks Committee to bring forward some items to the council to enhance the park, to actually enhance and preserve the Freedom Park theme that we have, along with bringing in some food trucks for the day, doing a fireworks show in the evening. And the majority of the, of the cost associated with these events stem from donations and not from the city's general, city's general fund. Also, we have the country fair that's going to be happening. And what's really interesting is that the Veterans Freedom Day is one week and then the following week is the country fair. So what we'll end up doing for, in both cases, we will end up doing light pole banners and we will share the, the distribution of that. So we won't have thirty for the Veterans Freedom and thirty for the Country Fair. We'll mix and match so that both parties can have a longer advertising venue on board. We met with the Historical and Cultural Committee and we talked about the point we'd like to add a farmer's market and some country music to the event to increase the attendance. That should, that should assist and help the vendors that show up to the events get more people in to buy the material. Got very positive feedback from the Historical and Cultural Committee, so I'm looking forward to that, that event that's coming forward. In addition to that, we're looking at the Lighted Up Grand Terrace Tree Lighting Ceremony. One of the things that we talked about was trying to get a larger Christmas tree. So we, we went through a number of iterations in terms of, we looked at trying to get a very large live tree. Very large live tree was going to be five thousand dollars. We then looked at trying to get, to rent a tree and that was going to be six thousand dollars. And so we finally, from working with the committee, we actually decided that what they want to do is they want to decorate the entire median and have the Christmas tree become the centerpiece of, of the, of the program. And we can do that for a lot less than a live tree or getting a new tree. So the committee is very interested in looking at that. In addition to that, and I will bring something back to the council in the near future, one of the issues that we've had in the past regarding the Lighted Up Grand Terrace Committee, is it a committee that is not a committee? And so one of the things we're doing is the, the Parks Committee has requested that the Lighted Up Grand Terrace Committee become a subcommittee of the Parks Committee. And so I'll be bringing that back to the council in the next month or so. And then we also have this event that we're trying to coordinate where we want to get some quick little snippet radio spots by interviewing residents and why they love Grand Terrace and maybe be playing on AM sixteen forty. It would almost be like the storycorps that NPR does where it's, you know, I moved to Grand Terrace and this year, I stay in Grand Terrace because of this, I've raised my family because of this. And so we're going to be putting those on as part of our tourism and come to Grand Terrace and live in Grand Terrace as a part of that. So we're working on that process. In addition to that, we have the future event of the International Food Sampling and we actually have a number of restaurants in the city that, you know, have an international flavor. We are also going to be adding burgers and barbecue because of what he's opening up as part of this whole festival. The goal here again is to, in August, is to have a set day of the week where we work with the various restaurants and we, they provide promotional opportunities, discounts to residents to come out and eat at one of the various locations and we'll have music going from venue, the parking lot to parking lot to be able to accent during that month for those activities. And once again, our goal is, is to promote local restaurants and the various types of food you can have in Grand Terrace. Okay, and then we have the future event, the city anniversary party. Now, this is, one of the things the council did was that they established a, an opportunity for residents to volunteer because the Historical and Cultural Committee currently has an annual birthday party. But one of the things that we wanted to discuss was whether the birthday party was going to be sufficient for our fortieth anniversary celebration. And so the council established a, an anniversary committee and what they were going to be doing was to sit down with, I'm sorry, the anniversary party committee, they were going to sit down with the Historical and Cultural Committee and determine whether the events could work together or was there a need to have two separate events? So over the course now, we have, we had five people that volunteered, six if you count one couple volunteered. And so we have three council members who selected members from, two selected members from that committee, one who appointed someone differently, and then one member of the council said, well, why don't we just have all the members, all the people who volunteered participate in the birthday gathering committee with the Historical and Cultural Committee to make the determination? And so staff sort of in limbo, we kind of come back and want some direction from the council on that particular area. Because we want to make sure that we meet with the Historical and Cultural Committee in July to have that meeting to determine what's, what we can, what we're going to be doing, whether we're going to combine it all as part of the, the regular city birthday party or plan to have a separate event. And so staff's looking for some direction on whether we can have, just take all the people that signed up to be a part of that or move forward the original plan that the council has by appointing individuals to that. So I believe with that, I also have one final slide just to show the, the council that these are the various groups that we're working with, the Parks and Recreation Committee, Advisory Committee, the Veterans Wall of Freedom, the Foundation of Grand Terrace, Historical Culture Committee, Friends of Blue Mountain, local restaurants, Grand Terrace Tree Lighting Team, AM sixteen forty, and other community partners. So we are engaged with various groups throughout the city trying to make sure that, that we are enhancing existing events and developing those partnerships. So with that, Mayor and council, this is also the budget and I think I sent you a message earlier, Councilmember, that, that the majority of the funding for the program is actually coming from donations and not from the actual general fund. It's about six thousand dollars from last year's, but this current year's budget and six thousand more in the, in the new budget. But the remaining portions of that are all funds that the city will be raising as, as part of the fortieth anniversary party. And then one last addition that we have been working on, but we were finally getting some traction on, is that we, we finally got some contact with some local bike clubs that are very interested in, in doing a sort of a, sort of a brief little bike ride through Grand Terrace, come like, to the, I'm sorry, sort of the memory of the Tour Day Terrace that used to be here in town. So I'm actually meeting with them on Thursday. They're very excited about developing a, a ride through, a ride through Grand Terrace. And so we don't anticipate that costing too much, I could bring that back to the council, but I'd like to add that to, to part of the program if we, if we continue forward. So with that, I'm available for any questions the council may have.
Questions of staff? Mayor Proton?
Yeah, I'm, I'm very frustrated with this whole thing. We have a failure to communicate and, and I'm really concerned when I go out to the community and people are asking where are their banners or why this or whatever, that. This is a community that's accustomed to being involved in its affairs. And again, I get a long presentation that I had before already and that's not the, the issue for me. The issue for me is we're halfway through the, well, more than halfway through the year on a celebration and it seems like we always have the cart before, for the horse, so to speak, is staff comes, and I don't know who staff is, singular or plural, here's my ideas for a fortieth birthday and this is what we're going to do versus we have a park and rec committee or council, would you like to appoint some people? And then, then it's like, okay, you know, I keep putting forward a name and now it's like, well, other people think maybe we just ought to open it to everybody, which is fine, but, you know, to me, it's chaos when you have just anybody, you know, and everybody in control of something, you lose control. I think there's something to having council appointees because if there's some problems of how they're conducting themselves, if they're unduly dominating, you know, the discussion or causing other issues, that there's an appointment process that they know, you know, they can kind of be taken aback too. I mean, so, so, you know, it, it, it just, you know, or to get, I don't know, it just seems like if this was going to be a fortieth anniversary a year ago, there should have been some citizens committee steering this. And, you know, and it concerns me too from, from, we have such limited resources and I have a very expensive city manager attending to these things. So, so to end my thing is what I, I would like to see is we, we need to figure out how we're going to proceed. I would like to proceed with, with using appointed people, either the Parks and Recreation Commission or if we appointed three people and two people haven't appointed anybody, encourage them to quickly to do that and make them the steering committee and whoever wants to volunteer is a volunteer, but they're not in charge. Thank you.
Councilmember Hesse.
I agree with Mayor Proton. You know, we, we came and we picked people for the committee and then plus, you know, we had the Parks and Recreations pretty much oversee what's going on. And, you know, we want to make this a nice time, but I think our committee members need to take it and then the Parks and Recreation need to run with it like the Mayor Proton was saying. That's all I have.
Thank you. I think we're getting too bureaucratic with this whole thing and I think when people want to volunteer that we shouldn't turn them away. But I'm very concerned about the money that we're going to be spending and I understand that there are donations that are going to be given, but it doesn't look that way. And when we are proposing a fireworks show and a number of people have an issue with fireworks just in general, when we have them on Fourth of July and we have them on New Year's, I don't know that that's necessarily something that we should be planning for and spending money on, regardless of whether we're having donations or not. I just think at this point, it, it doesn't show well. And, and it's nice that we're having a fortieth anniversary and I appreciate the things that have been done to this point. I, I certainly don't want to be in a position where we're turning away volunteers who just want to give their time and do something for their city, but I also think we need to be sensitive to the cost of, of the issues, even if it is six thousand dollars.
Yeah. And so Mayor, here's where, where, this is why in the beginning I brought this to the council. And the council can, in each particular item, there was a detailed sheet and the council can give me direction to say, no, I don't want that. No, I don't want that. Move forward this. So, and so the, the direction that I received was to move forward with the appointees for the city anniversary dinner. And that's what the direction was here.
And you put out a call to volunteers and five people volunteered and now we're going to turn one of them away.
And so where I'm, okay. The difficulty is, the direction that I received here, the plan that you approved was do a committee and move forward. But the request that I received about, well, why not allow others to participate? Okay, that may sound like a reasonable request, so I'm coming back to the council to ask that question.
I mean, if, if there's somebody that needs to be in charge, then fine, have a committee be in charge, but I don't want to turn away volunteers.
Okay.
I mean, that, I didn't realize there was any in charge involved in it, but if there's in charge, then that's fine. I just don't want to turn away volunteers.
Okay. And so if that's the direction I'm getting, take, who, take who's ever volunteered and who's ever been appointed and move forward, that's, that's, that's why I'm here. Because I want to get that very clear and, and I'm fine with that. What I don't want to do is to get direction here and then do something counter to what you guys told me.
Mayor Proton?
You know, and this is, may seem, appear to people, other people not knowing, but this is, again, you know, it's just, it's an internal communication issue for me. I'm not accustomed to being given a menu that's for something of this significance and saying, well, you guys, you know, didn't take out fireworks or you didn't take out whatever, because one thing that I've been very vocal about was I didn't feel Community Day was being properly executed by the Foundation of Grand Terrace. And I told you and we had a workshop about it and we, we gave direction and that still stayed with the Foundation of Grand Terrace. So don't tell me that you came with something and that we had an opportunity to take it out because really, you know, we're just, it, it's just like from day to day, it changes. You know, it's like, well, I need direction, okay, well, you know, the community needs to be involved, you know, here's, here's a group of people we're appointing. We're not turning away volunteers, we're just saying there needs to be some structure because everything's ad hoc then. Let's just change our mind every single day then. And that's, you know, the, the concern I have. As far as fireworks, when we changed the ordinance and we had a workshop about it, we were saying, you know, the high school, you know, probably doing something at the high school, which I think is a more preferable location than, than, than the Veterans Park. But what I was hoping to do was when we appoint people, we're delegating some authority from the city council for them to make some decisions and we let go.
Okay.
But they have to have, they can't be given a menu and said, we decided for you how all these things are going to be executed. And that's the problem that I had.
And so just to be clear, when we talk to... And, and so, just to be clear, when we talked about Community Day, you made it very clear that, that the event wasn't progressing the way you thought it was, but I was never given direction by, by, by the council.
We had a workshop, we, we had a workshop, okay? And we're not being listened to. We had a workshop, and in that workshop, this was, was one of the issues brought up, and we had a consensus. So, if you wanted a vote, then I guess you could have put it on the agenda, and we could have voted on it. But I thought we had a strong consensus, and we're able to deal with consensus on a lot of things.
Okay. Then, then, then that's, that's my misunderstanding, and I apologize for that, because I, I, I understand, and there's some frustration, and there's some frustration on staff's part about that particular event, but I, I didn't believe that I, that I had direction to take over that, to take over that event. And that's, and that's the disconnect, because I understand, and there were more than your comments about the, the frustration with, with the event, but one of the things that I don't want to be accused of is the bureaucrat taking over events.
But it was the city event, and the city said at one point, "We can't afford to do these things." So, we were able to say, "Thank you for your efforts," and...
Absolutely.
...take it back.
And Mayor Protem, one of the things that I'm bringing back to the, to the next meeting is, you know, the city has, part of its overall goals is about partnerships. And one of the things is that the partnerships that, that are currently in place are based upon partnerships that were developed in 2012 and 13, when the city said, you know, "We, we can't do this. We're not in the same position anymore," but I think it, it needs to be very clear that our partnerships in certain areas, as you said, Community Day, because we have a Parks Commission now, and you have a little more staff, you actually, you have staff now that are actually staffing those events, is that you have to redefine the partnership, and the partnership is that we don't mind the community, we like the community, but in some events, we're taking the lead. And, and that's going to come back, and I'll give very clear direction on that from the council.
Well, and just, you know, my final comments on this is, I don't really believe when the council said they couldn't afford to do these things anymore. I'm not quite sure that was really true, because, you know, the parks are our assets. Our staff that go and staff those things are our assets, you know, so, you know, and then we waive fees, you know, so it was a zero-sum game in a lot, in a lot of respects. And I think there's some animosity in the community when, when there was some saying, "We're going to lock your parks, and we're going to close this, and we're going to, you know, do whatever that." And just for the record, I want to say that, you know, I, I was one of the ones that changed that dialogue to, you know, like the state was doing at that time. If you don't hit a revenue target, you could have trigger cuts, but let's not go out in the community and saying, "We're just going to stop doing all these amenity things because we think that's going to get their attention." You know, and that's been a, you know, I'll just say, a bad faith thing that we, we did that we shouldn't have done.
Yeah. And Mayor Protem, when I arrived in 2015, there was an un-called staff person that, that you could call if something went wrong, and there were fees that were being, that, that they had to pay. During the, over the course of the years, you guys have changed that, and, and I said at the time was, "Well, if we're not available," what I've learned along the way is, it doesn't matter who's doing the event in the city park, because it's always going to come back to the city, because it's the city park. So, we had to step the game up, so, so, so we went from very little support to actually providing a lot more support. So, you're, you're absolutely right. And so, as I said, we just need to have the conversation very clearly that there are, there are some events that happen that are city-related events that the city needs to be responsible for, because ultimately, in the end, people think it's a city event.
Well, I think we've had that conversation.
Okay. More direction needed? Councilmember Hesse.
And Mr. Duffy, you're right about, you know, because they do look at the city for that, because even when I went to Community Days, the first thing was asked, like, "Why are we having it this time? Why is it so hot?" I can't control the weather, but you know, it's, it's, they look at the council members or the councils, you know, on, when the event is successful or when, you know, it's not to what they want. So, you know, we do, like the Mayor Protem, the mayor said, you know, "We got to be more active in it, and, you know, this is our city, and, you know, the people voted for us to, to make sure this is done." And as far as, like, the mayor said, you know, volunteers, you know, the city is built on volunteers, and, you know, the thing was, we appointed people for the committee so they can make the decisions, and, you know, the volunteers could be there, you know, we want to hear their voice, but we need directions and stability on there to make sure, hey, I listen, you know, just like we listen to the public, you know, we want to make sure, hey, we can't do it like that, we could do it, we're going to do it like this, because the committee members, they listen to the volunteers. So, they just need directions on that and, you know, some kind of like, structure. So, not turn away any volunteers, I mean, they go there and volunteer, I mean, that's what this city's great about, the volunteers. But, you know, like, you're right, though, they do come up to the council in this, you know, about events, when they are positive or negative, we hear it both ways, and we would like to have, you know, more input on that and stuff, and I don't know, you know, later if we change, you know, when Community Day is, could it be a cooler time of the year or something, you know, so that it's not hot? I think we had the reverse curse of the orange shell, you know, it's raining and the orange shell, it's always hot during our Community Days, it's, you know, but, just something like that, just going forward. I mean, we got a big step to do, and we just got to move forward on this. So, thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Well, I'd still like when we have our budget discussion that we consider not doing some of the items. All right, so we will move on to item 11, Approved Professional Services Agreement for Preliminary Engineering Services for Mount Vernon Safety Improvement. Mr. Alan French, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. Alan French, Public Works, bringing this item to you. Before you is to execute a contract with Evan Brooks and Associates for, this item supports the 2030 Goal Number One, to ensure our fiscal viability, and Goal Number Two, to maintain public safety. In November of 2016, the city was awarded a Highway Safety Improvement Program Grant, the HSIP grant, cycle eight. The grant was for, for $435,700, including design. The grant was to cover improvements along the Mount Vernon Corridor for stop, always stop intersections, as well as to signalize intersections. Last week, we received the letter to allow us to proceed with awarding the design of those improvements. This involves preparing the plans, specs, and estimates for the construction. The proposed cost for this work would be $33,000, which is included in the grant, award of the grant. Staff did solicit three other quotes, but we only received one other quote for the work. We are recommending to award Evan Brooks and Associates the contract, as they were the least amount bid for the work for this phase. Hal from Evan Brooks and Associates is here, and I am happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. French. Any questions of staff at this time? All right. See, then we'll open it up to public comment. Are there any requests to speak on this item, Madam City Clerk? Any requests to speak on this item?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. We'll close public comment, bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I'd like to approve the, or make a motion for number 11.
Staff recommendation?
Professional Service Agreement with Evan Brooks Associates for Preliminary Engineering Services for the Mount Vernon Safety Improvement Project. Authorize the city manager to execute the formal agreements and any amendments.
I'll second the motion, but I...
We could hear Councilwoman Hesse, so if you could repeat that.
I must have turned it off, you want me to say it again?
Sorry about that.
All right, to make the motion, can you hear me now? Approve the Professional Service Agreements with Evan Brooks Associates for the Preliminary Engineering Services for Mount Vernon Safety Improvement Project. Authorize the city manager to execute the formal agreements and any amendments. Can you hear that?
I second it, and I hope we get some good stuff out of this.
All right, motion by Councilmember Hesse, second by Mayor Protem Robles. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember Hesse voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor Mattinable voting yes.
All right, thank you. Mr. Duffy, City Manager Communications.
Yes, Mayor. So, just wanted to announce that the Blue Mountain Silverliner is back, starting on Tuesday, May 29, 2018. They returned. We hired a new bus driver, and the seniors really love her, and it's, we're back to providing lunch, rides to the senior center, activities, appointments, and so, the seniors are very happy that the bus is back in, back in service. In addition to this, this is the City of Grand Terrace's Animal Control and Code Enforcement Vehicle. As you can see, look at the back of that vehicle, that's, that's what the wrap is, and no one's looking at the picture. Oh, are you going to write that? Okay. And there you go, and that's, so that's the, it'll have cages in the inside to be able to house animals and be able to take them to the, to their location. So, this vehicle is being driven by code enforcement and animal control.
And who wrapped the vehicle?
The, Sandra, you want to?
Yes, the vendor is a local vendor, Platinum Wraps.
I was hoping, well, you know, there's obviously not the money for it, but that city seal and the palm trees that are hooks and...
That's the whole seal right there.
Yeah, I know.
Can you play that song, "Who Let the Dogs Out When We Catch a Dog"?
And then, also, Mayor Protem, the seal's right there in the front, too, bigger, right there on the front. Also, too, I wanted to announce the great news, that the city received the Habitat Conservation Fund Grant of $212,000 for the Blue Mountain Trailhead. And so, starting in July, they'll be training, and then we can actually start working on having a trailhead in the Blue Mountain, so we will be the Blue Mountain City with access on a regular basis to the Blue Mountains.
Congratulations.
And so, that's a, that's a great deal for the citizens of Grand Terrace, and we're very happy that, you know, we, we did not receive the grant last year, and the state came out, they were, they thought it was a good project, but they said that your application, the written application wasn't as, as sound as it should be, so we talked to the consultant, and they resubmitted the application with some improvements at no cost to us, and we were able to get the grant this time.
Now, when you say trailhead, it's not going to be where you go on observation and improve that location right there.
That's exactly where, Van Buren and Observation right there. And so, what it'll have is it'll have, it'll have parking, off-street parking in the inside, restroom, and access to the trailhead. Well, it's a, it's a match, a 50/50 match, so we're using park impact fees to make that match. So, you'll hear more about the funding component in the near, near future. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. All right, we took care of the closed session, so we will adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held Tuesday 26, June 26, 2018. However, we will have a special budget meeting on June 20, June 19. So, for the regular city council meeting, we will be meeting at 6:00 PM. Agenda item requests must be submitted in writing to City Clerk's office no later than 14 calendar days preceding that meeting. Thank you all for your attendance tonight. We are adjourned.